Also do things board clerk responsibilities. And we can count on him to continue learning how our processes could be improved streamlined, managing all the different documents for public records requests, meaning management, goals, permissions and all that jazz. So we really appreciate your being a standout for us here. As well as for the state, but also nationwide. So please do share your knowledge with them, but also from us, how important this work is that you do and we just can't achieve our goals without it.
Very cool. Can any of us attend as like hecklers?
Now, now.
It takes a lot to rattle on the outside. We won't show the inside.
Many congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. All right. So Joe, we hope we didn't give you a heart attack earlier. Wondering if squeeze in this topic before the lunch break. Please come on up. And it looks like we have the opportunity to appoint new members to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. Brad, welcome.
Hello. Nice to see you.
Yeah, it's been ages. So I should also apologize for my continuing to rename your multifaceted department. Just A and T for assessment and taxation to records, assessment, taxation and elections. Because each of those areas are big in themselves.
They are. Thank you so much.
I never asked permission and I don't think I'm going to stop until you come up with a better.
I understand he had a very nice term for it. I think it was rate.
Yes. You guys rate. Welcome.
All right. Well, thank you. I guess we'll just start with a good afternoon Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Elections and Recording. And with me today is Fred Ramsden, Division Manager for Cartography and Records. And today our purpose, as you said, was to appoint the candidates to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, the BOPDA. To start with, I'd like to clarify some new legislation from this last session. We have House Bill 2031, which renamed the BOPDA to Property Value Appeals Board, P VAB. And House Bill 2237, which increased the board member terms from one year to two years. Neither of these were going to take effect this year. So this year it's still for property tax appeals, one-year terms. Next year, when we reconvene, it'll be P VAB with two-year terms. Last year, we had a very successful year and I'm very appreciative of the four returning board members. We do have a new applicant this year and we'll cover that in just a moment. We are committed to appointing individuals with a variety of multicultural experiences that reflect the many diverse communities of Washington County. Forty percent of the candidates self-identified as Black, Indigenous or communities of color. Forty percent of the candidates were women. The purpose of the Board of Property Tax Appeals is more than weighing evidence and adjudicating values. It's an opportunity to demonstrate the transparent process, accuracy of the tax system, and is a vital contributor, vital contributor to the public confidence of Washington County. An example of that would be when Measure Five was first implemented, it had 6,200 appeals. Last year, we had 128, just down from 144 the prior year. Board members must be residents of Washington County who did not work, do not work for Washington County or any other taxing district within the county. It's a system of peer review. That's very important. Community engagement conducted a vacancy announcement and recruited for this board. The recruitment period went, ran from March 21st, 2023 to May 2nd, 23. This year's candidates are Anthony Mills from District One since 2012, John Junkin from District Two since 2018, Darlene Dick from District Three since 2019, Heather Brown from District Four since 2021, and the new applicant is Eric Squires, District One. The next steps, the Board of Commissioners approve of the candidate, candidates. And with a note, this is on the board agenda for the regular session in two weeks on September 19, 2023. And at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions from the board.
Any questions?
Did you have very many applicants? Are those the only? We had these five and there was one additional applicant who later decided they were not interested.
Right, okay. So there wasn't anybody, there's not a long queue.
Sadly, no.
Thank you.
I wonder, in terms of the appeals, you must hear some interesting appeal statements, or this board must.
Across the board, we've heard just about, I mean, over the years, people come up with a lot of interesting things, but it's very much about the value itself. It's not about taxes. It's not about a number of things. It's literally the focus on the value and is the value legitimate or not? As of the specific date, the assessment date, July 1st each year, January 1st each year.
Yes. I wonder if maybe this is an opportunity where we should give the, you know, take snippets of the meeting, give some of the committee members the opportunity to express in a video why they like to serve on this. And if I recall correctly, it's, it's not a heavy lift in terms of time, right?
Not with the appeal load the way it is right now. In a heartbeat, it can change. It can be a very heavy lift, like what we used to see in the 90s.
But what, what causes an inflection point like that, as you say, in a heartbeat?
Law changes are the main. Okay. When it was Measure Five, it only addressed half the formula. The rates were affected, but the values were not. Now with Measure Five and 50 simultaneously in place, that really diminished the value. But it's also a matter of, people can come in and they can ask questions. We've got great customer service and they can learn about the process and what's really affecting their taxes. So I really believe it's a community service where people have confidence in what we do.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I think it might be interesting to just have a short video about what this committee does. Gives a little, brings a little bit more to life about what assessments and values are all about. And also for community engagement for this important board and commission. Cool. Great. It's just an idea. Not telling you, Ms. Angie, what to do. Just an idea.
We have many video ideas in the queue, so I know that Mr. Nelson and team will put this in the queue on their communications plan and work.
Great. All righty. Well, I know I don't have any questions about this roster of folks to appoint. And I haven't heard anything any different from my colleagues. So onward, home we go.
See you in two weeks then.
Great. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Next, we are moving on to our franchise agreement and an amendment. And is Adrian? Oh, great. Mira and Adrian are here. I'm sorry, I should be using your full names. Adrian Donner and Mira Samantha. Thank you.
No problem. Well, good afternoon Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mira Samantha. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. I'm here with Adrian Donner this afternoon, who's a program supervisor for EMS program here in Washington County to present some 911 emergency ambulance franchise agreement updates for your board's information.
Thanks. Hello Chair Harrington Commissioners. Nice to see you again. Today I am bringing two proposed changes to our newly minted franchise agreement. The addition of language specific to receiving their financials, which was requested when it was originally approved, and some changes to the transportation rates. I want to outline and discuss the changes that were needed and any additional information, of course, that you would like before it comes before you, in a board meeting, get permission, of course, to bring it to a board meeting and then discuss the preferred format that you would like it in said board meeting. So the first one is the financial changes. These, you have the track changes document and they're on page 16. It's a very short clause, but it outlines that AMR will send us automatically their financials each year. Those are generally prepared and ready in, in April or May. Though we'll get an audited financial from the parent company, Global Medical Response, and we'll get financial statements from AMR Northwest showing their Washington County business. So we'll get both of those pieces each year automatically is how it's written in the proposed change. The transportation rate, there's a few slides that are, you may have seen before. One, just to kind of ground set, in Washington County, the only money that AMR receives for their work here is the rates that they charge for the transportation. We don't augment the system at all with county funds. The part of the, the modernization process that we went to was to ensure that our rates were brought to a national standard. And the, one of the standards that's out there is, is going with this 300% of what the Medicare approved rate is. So what happened is when I came in January and February, it overlapped with new rates that came out from Medicare. So we brought the work session and the, the agenda item in January and February. In January, Medicare released their new rates. And since we don't have direct access to the specific pieces, we missed that. And so we're really looking to correct our rates. The only change in the document is the dollar figure change, which is on page 12. You'll see, or if you do the math, it's about 7%. It's a much bigger rate than Medicare normally does. In 2022, they did a pretty small rate increase, which didn't match what inflation was already, the effect it was already having. So this year's increase was bigger than normal to catch up with inflation. To give you a context of where we sit in the region, we have just a comparison. Our current rates that took place in the beginning of July are at the top. The proposed rate to the next line showing that increase. And then, of course, the rates that are currently in Multnomah County and Clackamas County as well. There are a few differences. Multnomah and Clackamas do one rate, whether it's advanced life support or basic life support. We differentiate because there's a difference in staffing and caregiving. So we give the lower rate for BLS and the higher rate for advanced life support. And we fall in the middle. As a reminder for how this affects the, the people in Washington County or the people who are in Washington County when they call 911. Medicare and Medicaid have set rates. That's what they pay. So folks who are taking an ambulance and they are on Medicare or Medicaid, it doesn't affect them. That they, AMR will get what they get. When you look at the insurance or HMO and then the patient payment, of course, it's very complex because there's lots of different ways that insurance is paid. But if you look at an example like Washington County, for instance, I'm on Kaiser. So I know that I'm going to pay $75 if I take an ambulance. After this rate, I'm still going to pay $75. So if you have that kind of payment, it's the same. If you're a percentage of the, the rate payment, it will increase by a small amount. And then finally, the folks who would be most affected by this potentially are those who are uninsured. We still have about 6% of our population that is uninsured. And those are of course going to take the brunt of it. Most of those people will fall into a bucket of the population that our EMS vendors write off each year as uninsured, unable to pay. That is, when I wrote the slide back the first time, I confirmed with Metro West. I went back and confirmed with AMR that this is still accurate and they confirmed that this is still accurate at about the same percent. So then my questions for you are, one, as always, do you have any other information that you would need to be able to approve these changes? Second, would you prefer them as a consent agenda item or an action item? And would you prefer to have this presentation given again with whatever added information you want at the meeting? Or just as a consent agenda item?
Commissioners.
Well, I'm going to go bottom up. I'd like to see this presentation at a board meeting, which would mean it should be an action item. And the reason why is because although your schedule shows the current rate and the proposed rate, if you go back two years, the current rate is significantly less than 1489. We're almost, if I remember correctly, it's around 700 or 800. Now, we didn't have ALS and BLS segregated out, but still, the rate back then was somewhere $700 or $800. So we're basically doubling this in a very short period of time. And I'm not advocating for the insurance companies in this, but I am advocating for the 6% you're talking about because they may not know that they have the option of not paying that. So, you know, they may pay $25 a month or $50, whatever they can afford. So I think that's my biggest concern. We're going huge leaps in just a few years in pricing on all this and how it impacts the 6%.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, that percentage of the population that, the uninsured, it's not always written off. Is that correct? I mean, isn't that?
I probably couldn't say it was always written off.
Right. And so I'm just, and I don't think we're in a position to, to tell people it would be written off is my, that's my, that's my point. And I think that that's, that's not our business, you know? So that's, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page there. And we're not out of line with the other counties in relationship to the charges. I remember, could you go back to that slide? So I, I don't, I guess I don't see the same need to put this into, for an action item. I think this, this is an adjustment that we go through. It's, it's not as, this information is available. I, I personally don't see the need to do that.
Well, let me just ask one more question. It seems to me that, again, this is, I'm just trying to recall when we went through this a year ago or so, that there's, that there is something in between the Medicare reimbursement and the uninsured that.
Can, can we pause there for one second Commissioner Willie?
Yeah.
Because it's not just the uninsured patient that ends up as a write-off. So, and let me be clear about this.
Kind of where I was trying to go there, but I just couldn't.
I'd like to talk a little bit about patients in process. You've been very clear to us here that those patients who are on Medicaid, Medicare covered, those patients who have any kind of insurance and what, what would happen there? For patients who don't pay, let me, let me step back. And by the way, another team member, Tim Case, is here with us as well. We're used to having him, Adrian and Mira before us on this topic. So I just want to preface my comments with, I've talked to county council and I find myself in a situation from usual and it's not in a conflict of interest. But my colleagues know that my sister and I have done a lot of work to get my mom transferred from living at home with care to living in a memory care unit. And in that process, a month or so ago, my sister found in my mom's mail a bill collector notice for an ambulance transport that she had in May. And my sister's been handling a bulk of things, so she asked me if I could handle this one. So I've been in touch with the bill collector and in touch with AMR, who is the service provider in the city of Manchester, New Hampshire. An entirely different company than, you know, they have geographic companies and different contracts and whatnot. But for full disclosure, I've been in touch with AMR of Massachusetts, who is the business entity for this. And this is a situation where my mother does have insurance. She's very well covered. But something about the billing has gotten balled up, not in her proper name. I mean, we just paid a bill of multiple hundreds of dollars for the month before for ambulance transport. What happened to this one? Nobody knows. So it isn't just the uninsured. Mistakes can happen. And so it's the uncollected where the ambulance service hasn't been able to get the bill paid. Their debt collectors haven't been able to get the bill paid. So then it goes into uncollected. So it isn't a matter of, this is a, a general flow that businesses do when they, they can't get all of their payments from, from clients. So, am I, so I wanted to summarize how the flow of it goes. That's what I just described has been my experience, but you all are the subject matter experts. Is there more to this process or did I describe it incorrectly?
No, you're, you're correct. The, I mean, they're a business, so it's a similar flow with the complexity of billing Medicare, billing the insurances, all those things. The, once those pieces are billed, the remainder, depending on where they fall, goes to the client in, in that insurance HMO section and things can go awry.
So with the case where someone, where the insurance part gets mixed up, my example is collection agencies get involved. In the case where a client, as you say, doesn't have insurance, they're billed directly from AMR and AMR, like all service providers, does try to get payment from folks. But where that falls short and collection agencies fall short, then, then they have the coverage.
Yeah. And, and we don't have the experience yet with AMR, since we're just now successfully finishing our first month. But I can say from past experience that as long as the person receiving the bill is talking with the vendor, it doesn't go to collections. If they're having that communication, they will, I think you mentioned the payment plan option. They will work with them to do a payment plan. There's quite a bit of flexibility.
Hospitals do it too.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So I just wanted to try and better explain that process. And since I'm talking, I'll step right in. We've, we've been through quite the public process in setting up the EMS alliance, putting the RFP together, responses to the RFP, the contracts, you know, multiple public notices. So I do like the idea of putting this presentation, well, we don't need the last slide in it, but into the packet, but I think it can go on the consent agenda just fine. Commissioner Fai?
Thank you Chair. I have, I have a question. I think the 6% in conversation about the collection agencies piqued my interest. I thought this was a pretty straightforward presentation. Thumbs up. But this is turning into an interesting conversation. And the question that just came to my head during this conversation is along the lines of charging the clients, patients, and then also writing them off. Is that, is there some ethical re? Is there, it seems like unethical to do that. And I think Walmart got sued recently. Some similarity to double dipping with, so is the client going to be sent to collections or that route if they can't pay, whatever reason? But then, like what kicks off the write-off? That's where I'm going with this.
Can I, can't answer that specifically. It's a little too deep into the, the, the activities of AMR and insurance. But they wouldn't double dip. So if they were being paid, they wouldn't write it off. The, the write-off is really uncollected. So they write off the, the uncollected fees rather than anything that was collected.
How, how it works in the fee says, when they bill it, it's income to them. They report it as income. Then when they can't collect it, they write it off. So it's a net sums zero.
But we're, we're the policymakers for Washington County. We could set this policy if we wanted to.
No, we could.
We couldn't require AMR to do what we want for.
Mr. Anderson, there's a question of legal and ethics. Could you answer?
Yeah. So, so when you're setting up a franchise agreement, you're not really addressing, you know, their business practices. We set a rate and then they charge it. And then if they have deals with insurance companies, then that's their deal. Obviously Medicare and Medicaid have their own rates and they won't pay a dollar more. But we don't get involved with their collection effort practice at all in, in this scenario.
In regards to the uninsured population?
Correct.
Okay. But isn't that by regulation as well? I mean, isn't the insurance, I mean, the insurance companies are regulated.
Right. They are separately regulated by the state.
So they'd have their own process for any ethical mistreatment that we are not involved in, is what I'm saying.
I, I hear that, but I think that there's an opportunity to challenge that as the policymakers. I don't know. I've, I'm.
I don't, I don't think you have that ability for what we're doing here.
Trust your judgment and leadership on that. But I think for me, this seemed to be a straightforward presentation. So I will go with the majority here and say I'm fine with the consent. Thank you. Moving along.
Great. And if you have any other questions of staff on this, do feel free to take it offline and we'll.
Of course. And I'll add the presentation without the last slide.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next topic. Consider location variance for methadone clinic in Hillsborough. Hi, Mira.
Well, hello. Good afternoon again.
You and Mr. Anderson are in the hot seat.
That's right. One chair over, so it don't seem so far from him. Well, good afternoon. Just again, for the record, Case Public is just tuning in. My name is Mira Samantha and I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. I use she/her pronouns. And so I am here alongside Brad Anderson with County Council to present some information and some. to present some information and some policy questions for your board's consideration today, in particular regarding considering a waiver for the citing restrictions for a methadone clinic that's being proposed here in Hillsborough, in the city of Hillsborough. There are some subject matter experts in the room. We weren't sure how many questions or how detailed questions the board would have today. So, when and if we get to that, I might have some additional subject matter experts come forward. I believe we have someone present from Acadia Healthcare in the audience. Perfect, so they are here. So, when, again, when and if the board has specific questions for Acadia Healthcare, they are available to answer those directly. And so, just a really brief outline of what we'll be going over for your board today. Just, I'll be talking briefly about our goals for the presentation. I'll be providing some background on Senate Bill 910, talking about what is methadone and why are clinics need it? Discussing the proposal that staff received from Acadia Healthcare to waive the citing restrictions, sharing with you staff input on this topic. And then again, wrapping up with some board direction ideally for staff for next steps. And so, getting really particular, the actual request for the waiver. So, the information that we'll be sharing is from Acadia Healthcare to waive what's called a state restriction as outlined in Senate Bill 910 regarding citing a methadone clinic specifically within 1,000 feet of a school. So, that's the nuance, there is 1,000 feet. And the site that's being proposed is within 950 feet, so 50 feet variance. And again, the goal would be to receive policy direction from your board. Do you want us to return, staff to return with a resolution and order and an action item at your business meeting on September 19th? So, a little background on Senate Bill 910. Oregon Revised Statutes 430.590 reads that it is unlawful for any person to commence operating a methadone clinic within 1,000 feet of a school. However, Senate Bill 910 was passed in 2019 and does allow this board to waive that 1,000 feet. It states that a county or local public health authority may waive the citing restrictions under this section to the extent necessary to remove unreasonable barriers to patients accessing medically necessary treatment at methadone clinics. So, that's the specific language. I want to provide just a brief information about methadone. So, methadone is a prescription medication. It's approved by the FDA. It reduces opioid cravings and withdrawal symptoms. It's taken once a day, again, by prescription. It does not produce the same euphoric effects as opioids or limit someone's ability to function. Currently, in the United States, so not just here in Oregon, but in the United States, methadone can only be dispensed at an approved and regulated opioid treatment program. These programs don't just dispense medicine. They also include counseling and other supportive services to participants. I do want to note, as I'm sure the board is aware, that the current fentanyl crisis is really impacting our community. So, the need for methadone treatment centers is high, and we see a lot of benefit to methadone treatment. It's proving to be the most effective medication, in particular for the treatment of fentanyl addiction.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Stay on that point for a second. Because I think we've heard a lot in the last several years, more than three, about opioids and opioid addiction. And we're hearing this other phrase, fentanyl, that sounds like it's a very different word. And so, that association, even I have forgotten about fentanyl being a variation of, I don't know. Can you cover that for us?
That's an excellent question.
So, as I understand it, fentanyl is a synthetic opiate.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite Nick O'Conne, our Behavioral Health Division Manager, up. He was available for just these types of questions. Since he's the expert, I will defer to him to share just any additional.
Rod really nailed it there. Yeah, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid. And I think it's one of the things to really note that at this point, if you haven't received a pill from a pharmacy or it's not actually prescribed directly by a doctor, it's really important to really assume that that is counterfeit at this point and that many of those opioids are cut with fentanyl, or they are fentanyl. And so, yeah, Brad answered it correctly, but I'm here.
I don't mean to drag us down.
That's okay.
So, feel free to cut me off. My understanding of fentanyl is it's incredibly dangerous. And, I mean, people die from it, like, first use die from it. Is that to say, no matter how much you use that first time, it can kill you?
It's really hard to say, just with the potency of how much fentanyl is in any product.
Okay.
I'm not a subject matter expert on this in particular, but what I've heard and seen cited is that it could be hundreds of times more potent than heroin or another opioid.
But not always.
But not always, yes.
Thank you. That's the part that my brain needed to hear.
It's the risk, it's a risk.
Okay, all right, thank you. Welcome. And there's been such press around fentanyl availability, potency, and whatnot, that I really appreciate your reinforcing facts with me on this.
Absolutely. Nick, you can go ahead and stay, just in case. And if they don't need you, then you can go back in a minute. All right, so, moving on to just a little more background about this specific request. So, Acadia Healthcare did reach out to county staff earlier this year. They are the parent organization of CRC Health, and they are the ones requesting this exception. So, I just want to be clear, it's not a request from staff. It's a request from Acadia Healthcare, and staff is here to present and share the information for your discussion and your decision as a board. Currently, the closest methadone treatment clinic to the city of Hillsborough is in Tigard. That's the Tigard Comprehensive Treatment Center. It's approximately a 30-minute drive from the city of Hillsborough. So, for those who live in Hillsborough or surrounding areas, that's the distance they would have to drive to receive this treatment. So, Acadia Healthcare has proposed a possible site location for a new facility. It's a vacant lot, and I'll show you a snippet on the next slide, that's located on the corner of Baseline and Southwest Adams. So, it's a vacant slot, they would be vacant site, they would be building a new facility there. Acadia did reach out to the city of Hillsborough, who has no zoning concerns about the proposed location. It really goes back to the state's restriction and the county's ability to waive that restriction. Here is a map of the proposed location. So, if you look at the top left corner, you see the intersection of Baseline and Adams. That is where the site is being proposed. The school that is less than 1,000 feet away is St. Matthew Catholic School. You'll see it towards the bottom right-hand side of the screen or on your slide presentation. It's approximately a six or seven-minute walk, depending on how quickly one walks. It's about a little less than three blocks away from the proposed site. So, again, we're talking about a 50-foot difference that requires this board to grant that waiver. If it was 1,000 feet or more, Acadia would be able to build essentially where they want. Already covered the first bullet point here. I do want to note that Acadia Healthcare has reached out to St. Matthew Catholic School and reports that the school does not have any issues or concerns with the proposed site location. I will also note that there is a bus stop at the corner of Baseline and Southwest Adams, right next to the proposed treatment center. So, if somebody was seeking to attend that new treatment center, they wouldn't have to walk by the school to access it. They could take that bus right close to that new treatment center and wouldn't have to walk by the school. And the first bullet, I've talked about quite a bit, but again, this is all about that waiver to that state restriction. This has been done at least twice in Oregon since the passage of SB 910, once in Lane County and once in Multnomah County. Acadia Healthcare has been working with the State Opioid Treatment Authority, or SODA, to support this effort. And I did reach out to the contact at SODA, and they did answer my questions, or the ones that shared the information with me that it's been done at least twice, and they are supportive of Acadia's request for this waiver today. Staff input. So, preparing for today, we took a one-Washington County approach. So, Health and Human Services, including Behavioral Health and Public Health, worked with the Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections, County Council, and the County Administrative Office to discuss this request. Overall, staff are supportive of having a site in the city of Hillsborough, having a clinic here in Hillsborough versus as far away as Tigard would be a benefit to our community, given the opioid crisis. We do also note that Acadia has a history of providing this service in our state, and they've launched several clinics in Oregon and across the county. The location that they are proposing, the benefit is that it is within good proximity of the jail, which we see as a benefit, and is also not directly in a residential area. If the board decides to approve this request and grant a waiver, staff do have some recommendations, which is that Acadia would be intentional about neighborhood outreach and connect with relevant system partners, such as our Sheriff's Office and Community Corrections, who are located close to the proposed clinic. We also would recommend that they would orient the building and entrance in such a way to ensure that community members who are gathering outside to receive their medication would be able to not impede pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So, wrapping up with the policy questions, and then we'll open it up for what your board needs to know more of. But do you support this potential request from Acadia Healthcare to waive that state restriction as outlined in SB 910? And then what further information would your board need in order to move forward with a possible action item and a resolution and order?
Go ahead, Commissioner Trish.
I'd just like to say that both Commissioner Willie and I had the opportunity to talk with folks as well, and that was quite a while ago now. But for me, it boils down to thinking about the risk that the kids at that school are exposed to, and that's the whole purpose of that 1,000-foot measure. And I believe that there's more risk to those students if we don't treat people than there is if we change a 50-foot waiver. So, that's, I'm in support of this. And I believe that, especially when you look at how the crow flies, I mean, it's not like it's next door. So, I would be in support. And can you go back to the map? And would you go back to the policy question again? Thank you. And I don't need any further information on this. I think that it's our responsibility to work hard to make sure that we are helping our public deal with all addiction-related issues, and this is a great tool.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fai?
Thanks, Chair. I had a question about quantifying the impact of Acadia, and what would be the impact to Washington County? So, is there a way to get that data? And I think we can even take a step further and loop it back to folks in jail who are struggling with opioid addiction, the impact that would, you know, this new clinic, this new site could bring in. So, I think if we could quantify the health impact to the community, I think the sheriff's jail, the proximity of the jail was mentioned. If we could quantify some of the dynamics that exist around opiate use within the jail, and what could that translate to this? I think if we can paint the picture of this really has a great impact for Washington County, I think in that sense, a positive message that this is the right thing to do, not only for, we're also taking consideration about the students as well. So, I think, I'm not asking to paint the picture of the opiate pandemic that's, or, I should say endemic. Not to say we're going to have another pandemic, but, you know, I remember meth was a big thing back in the day. Now, it's then what will be the future. But clinics like this really do save lives and help people, you know, curb their addictions and become a productive society and eventually get off these hard drugs completely. So, I'm in alignment with what you're proposing. I don't think, I think it's good to bring the request in front of the board to move forward with this waiver. I do think quantitative information is also relevant. It's a need that I see deficit in me.
Thank you for the question, and it's possible that Acadia has done some of those calculations, but I'll see what other questions we have, and then perhaps invite them up if they want to add any information.
Yeah, you will. I'm in agreement with the waiving the 50-foot thing and what Commissioner Trish said. But what intrigued me was your slide just before this, and staff input. And you said, orient the building and entrance to ensure the community members gathering to receive their medication are not impeding pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Now, like Pam said, we have visited their mobile unit. This is going to be a bricks and mortar. So, everybody's going to come inside immediately. So, it isn't like there's going to be a line out the front door and down the street or something, is there? I mean, I'm anticipating that there's not going to be that many people. But, so maybe could you give me two things, just a little bit of, what you're anticipating the design of the building to be, that you're concerned that they're gathering to receive medication, not impeding pedestrian? And then, what are the, what are the anticipated numbers that maybe we should expect? Because to me, that would impact the design of the building. If the one in Tigard, is that what you said the other one is?
Yes, correct.
If the one in Tigard is, what's the numbers there that's being met, I guess?
If I could build off of that, as part of answering that, I think it'll also help address a question that I have of, I think it's assumed but not said that the company has control of the site already, is a question I have. And when you talk about the use of this building, it would be helpful to know how does a facility of this nature, and maybe it is also has other services in it as well. But what are the kinds of things that you've had to, I assume, get a, there's an application of some kind involved here? Or maybe it's just a waiver or not? Okay.
There's no formal method for the waiver request.
So, as we have questions about providing the waiver or not, I'm not sure that we know what there is in response to. So, I don't really know what it is. If anything, if there's been any kind of application for a waiver you've been given or whatnot.
So, I'm hearing a few.
It's all related.
Yeah.
What is this thing?
No, excellent questions. I think, so let me take the first one that Commissioner.
Perhaps we can have a case, you come up and answer your questions.
Well, yes, but I wanted to first hear from staff. What is it that they're responding to? And what I heard here is it's in response to an expression of wanting a waiver.
Correct.
And I don't know what form that comes in, if it comes in through the state or what.
It came directly from Acadia. It ended up being directed to Health and Human Services through an email, potentially an email chain. The state doesn't have a process, they don't have an application, they don't have a procedure. When I reached out to the representative with OHA and asked them if they have a preferred method or a process, they said, really, as long as it's in alignment, the direct words were "in the spirit of the legislation", to ensure that the board was giving it consideration and using their authority as a board. But they didn't have a specific process or procedure for us. Nor does, if I may, just add to that, Chair, nor does the county have a specific process.
Okay. Does OHA or somebody license all clinics that provide a methadone treatment?
Yes, in terms of the particulars, I think it would be a good opportunity to invite Acadia staff up, because I think some of your questions are getting nuanced to where they can probably provide even more detailed answers.
Well, I'm just wondering too, because you're the experts in all things public health and behavioral health, and substance use addiction is part of behavioral health. This is, there's a learning opportunity here in terms of processing this waiver to help our community understand why having substance use management is beneficial. is beneficial to the wider community. And so there's this specific application. Yes, I invite the speakers to come up and help inform us. I think there's also an opportunity, if we have to take action in the business meeting, to help provide the context of how this is part of substance use treatment here in our county. And I don't know what data that might involve or whatnot. But Nick, you've done a really good job of helping me as one board member understand the nature of this domain, and I would invite that.
Well, just to tag team with that, I'd like to hear from the sheriff. He is sitting in the audience, that's right across the street from his jail. But I completely agree with you.
Our jail?
We're plowing new ground here.
Yeah.
So it's kind of good that we make sure we know where we're going. It's just not about 50 feet, it's about the facility.
Well, and also, I was thinking about how how our state legislature has taken action to increase the mandatory requirements for our probation and parole officers. And Erin, I don't have the term down yet, I call them the touch points, the supervision points that community contact standards, I better write that down. And so, you know, people are trying to thrive in our community, and the easier we can make it on them, and the more effective we can make it on us. So you, I would invite you, Ms. Angie, to decide how we bring up subject matter, additional subject matter experts up to the table.
I would suggest we start with Sheriff Pat Garrett, since we already started to dive in on the staff input. And so Sheriff Pat Garrett, and then we can turn over to Acadia.
And as the sheriff comes up, just to answer your question about community members gathering, what my understanding, learning from the subject matter experts is, oftentimes, patients would be coming before a building opens and getting in line, so that when the building opens, they can receive their treatment. So that is just a.
And get on with their work day.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Commissioner, it's good to be with you. I would just add that, in addition to agreeing with what was provided by Director Samantha L. and Mr. Okun, we do on a regular basis, perhaps weekly, I think that's a pretty safe estimate, transport an adult in custody or more to Tigard for methadone, to acquire methadone. So this would make that much more, much less of a task for our staff to help adults in custody access treatment, number one. Number two, so I did corroborate that St. Matthew's Catholic School is fine with this waiver. Should that be your decision?
Thank you. Do you want to invite our Acadia guests to come up? At least to reinforce for me that you have control of the building? And I don't know if you're talking about updating an existing building or building a new building. And I'm not trying to approve that or not.
Oh, yeah, no, no. So let me introduce myself, I'm Dan Hyman, I'm the Regional Vice President with Acadia Healthcare. And so I'm over all of our clinics in, on the West Coast, from Alaska down to California over to Utah. This is Carissa.
Carissa Shepherd, I'm the Regional Director over our Oregon facilities.
So what do I need to know?
Everything. Remember, we're here to help you know everything that you need to know. So number one, in your question about the building, right now it's just a vacant lot. We are not under contract or anything with the owner of the lot currently, because we want to make sure we get permission. You know, we don't go into somebody else's refrigerator without asking permission. So we're here to talk to you guys about what needs to do to partner with you guys to open a facility here in Hillsborough. So as soon as we have the permission to do so, we would go into contract with the landowner.
So would the waiver be site-specific? Or it's specific to?
Yes, it's because it's the nine, it's a thousand-foot issue. And for clarification, the thousand-foot is from the very closest point of St. Matthew's to the very closest to this particular property.
As the crow flies, not as the street.
Yes.
Correct. And then, don't want to jump into a building to building, it's like, it's almost 1,200 feet, but because the lot is so big on that lot, it is less than a thousand.
Okay. All righty. I have no idea what timeframe a clinic like this operates.
Sure, we have seven other facilities in Oregon. So most of our facilities open around the five o'clock hour in the morning, so patients can come to work, get their medication, go to work without disrupting their life habits. We have a facility in Salem that will be open later, they're up until about 3:00 PM starting next month. So patients can come later in the event that they work early. So we really meet the need of whatever the population has at this time.
What's the Tigard hours?
They are open from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I have a question. We toured the mobile unit. Would you be moving that mobile unit to this, if you were to get this access? Would the mobile unit go there? Is that one of your thoughts?
So one of our thoughts is, we use those mobile units to kind of reach out to areas where we can, where it's more convenient for our patients to dose. So right now, we have over 60 patients that live in the city limits of Hillsborough that could drive to Tigard every day to get, to drive to Tigard to get their dose. So the idea is, if we can open a facility here in Hillsborough, then we can use that mobile unit to reach out to other, further out areas.
But you're currently using that mobile unit in Hillsborough, correct? And I'm just asking if you would move that mobile unit current site over to this site or that?
Depends on, during the construction process, we'd probably leave it where it is. But then, once the facility opens, then all those patients would transfer.
I just wanted to note that Marie Bowman-Davis, our Director of Public Health, and our Division Manager, excuse me, of Public Health, is here in the room. Should we have any questions? And I would like to invite Mira and Nick, if you think that Dr. Bowman-Davis might have something to add to our knowledge base.
Let's continue working through the Acadia questions, and we'll determine that after our staff follow-up.
Any other questions, Commissioners? I really appreciate your being here, by the way. I should have said that earlier.
I'm assuming all 60 don't show up at the same time, so that concern about gathering out into the street and all of that, and it's five o'clock in the morning, so, okay. So is that your peak time, five to eight? So somewhere in there is?
Oh, gosh, we have waves throughout the day. So patients that have to get to work do come early. We don't encourage loitering, so I don't foresee that being an issue across any of our facilities.
When Pam and I saw the mobile unit, you had two rooms in there? How many rooms are you anticipating in the bricks and mortar building?
So we normally with a facility this size, we'd have three or four dosing windows, where the patients would dose, plus we'd have enough counselors, probably six or seven different counselor offices. So we're looking at a fairly decent-sized building. Okay. And then just to address that lining up, that's a kind of a stigma that methadone clinics tend to have across the country, where you'll see pictures of people lined up for, you know, walks, waiting for their dose. That's not how we operate. Our patients, the average dose time from the time they arrive at the facility and check in until they receive their dose and they're on their way is four minutes. So it's not, it doesn't take very long to dose patients, and so we don't have the lines that some people might think that methadone clinics have.
One reason why we need a better balance for clinics too. Okay, I'm not seeing any further questions from Commissioners. So thank you very much for joining us today and helping us better understand what you're hoping to move forward with.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Mira, how about from you and your team?
Thank you, Chair Harrington, thank you for acknowledging Dr. Marie Bowman-Davis, who's in the audience. Marie was here just in case there were specific questions you wanted to direct towards public health, but there's nothing additional for her to add to the presentation. So at this, yes, go ahead.
I would like to ask, does the county in its responsibilities for public health, I know there are all kinds of different plans that you put together for different aspects, mental health, public health in general, vector control, all of that. Is there any responsibility that the county has for ensuring that there are accommodations for the multiple aspects of behavioral health and substance use addiction services to our community?
In terms of a statutory requirement?
Yeah.
So we have to have, I'll have Nick get into the details. We do have to have a SUD program, and we do have a program. But I'm not sure that it's very specific on, like, minimum requirements or anything.
Okay.
There aren't a lot of specifics related to the minimum requirements. I think the goal is for that to be, as the services and supports offer to our community members, to be as comprehensive as possible. And, you know, Mira really led with the acknowledgement that the one clinic that we have is in Tigard, and so.
So Washington County has one and only one clinic right now.
Other than the mobile.
Other than the mobile clinic.
Okay. Okay. Do you happen to know for our sister counties here in our metropolitan area that have, Multnomah County has 800, approximately 800-plus residents. We have 600-plus residents, Clackamas County has 400-plus. Lane and Marion County tend to be also in that considered pool of residents. And then Deschutes County as well, was, tend to be the top six most populous areas in our state. Is that similar in our other populous counties, or does OHA know?
I can't speak to that. The comparable number of clinics based on population size, that's information that OHA would likely know, because my anticipation is that they're doing a degree of credentialing with the different clinics that are being operated.
Chair, Ms. Samantha, in her work with the state, can see if we can easily get that answer, and include that in the follow-up.
And the only other question I have related to this, is this part of what they would consider public health modernization? Or would our staff know? Okay, thank you. Go for it, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you, Chair. Nick, this isn't necessarily a behavioral health question, but sort of like a public health, kind of a related question. I'm wondering, have there been a, well, one, is there a practice or partnership that exists between methadone clinics and needle exchange programs? And I just thought, because I was wondering, oh, this would be a great opportunity for the needle exchange program to partner with methadones, but I don't know if that's out there. And I didn't want to ask that question to the KU, I just wanted to see if our staff has explored that, or if there is.
You know, I can't speak specifically to those partnerships that happen. I know that there's a wide range of partnerships in the harm reduction space that happen, where needle exchanges are, or other harm reduction supplies or services are partnered with treatment and agencies. I can't speak to those specific partnerships happening in our community, but I would anticipate that it looks a little bit different in all communities in our state, but also our nation.
And definitely something that we could explore if the board were to approve this site location and it were developed.
Thank you. I know we, sorry, I came up with another question. I know our state court here, that there is a drug court, and also there are different terms for parole and probation. Imagination here, my imagination here is thinking that there may be terms and conditions for parole and probation or conditionary release, where seeking substance use treatment, visiting, having a prescription for methadone and so forth, may be a condition of that? Is that something that is a realistic?
Ms. Calvert, in her work with our Public Safety and Justice Partners, including our state court system, can share this information if Acadia does indeed locate here, but just on what resources there are here in Washington County.
Yeah, I was just looking for partnerships too. If someone forgetting whatever their dose schedule is, needs to take advantage of the other services that were listed on the slide around, excuse me, I'm going to find the slide, counseling and other supportive services. If maybe there's an office space for our community corrections folks to have that, reach that contact standard. So practicing the art of the possible, that's all. Okay. So in terms of next steps, we are all clear that the company is working towards control of this specific property, that the waiver is with regard to this specific property that we're dealing with. The point-to-point, closest-to-closest is 950 feet versus the 1,000. You've heard a variety of ideas about, with the assumption that this would come forward to us in an action. Just some general information that might be helpful to paint the picture about why this is a positive thing for meeting community need.
Excellent, we've taken good notes. And so we plan on returning on September 19th with an action item, a resolution and an order, including the additional information that you all recommended. So thank you so much.
And thank you to our multiple subject matter experts and the company themselves for helping accommodate our interest on this. Thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to, feel free to take that conversation out in the hallway, please, as our meeting continues. We have our Strategic Investment Program Policy Discussion with Mr. Matt Cragi, our Economic Development Manager, and Erin Doyle, our Senior Government Relations Manager.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of County Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Matt Cragi, Washington County's Economic Development Manager. This presentation and discussion today is a follow-up from our conversation with you all on July 18th. So for the public that is listening and participating here and wants to know more information about this Strategic Investment Program, a little bit of a background, we provided a lot of that information during the July 18th presentation, so folks can go and see the packet on the county's website. Today's presentation, we're going to provide just the briefest of recaps of the SIP tool and the county's existing SIP policy. But what we want to focus on today are the proposed updates to the county's SIP policy with a specific focus on the program objectives. So I'll get into some of the details there and why our focus is in that particular part of the policy. Why are we here today? Again, there are substantial investments that are coming from the federal government focused on the semiconductor and advanced manufacturing industry here in the United States. And here in Washington County, we are home to Silicon Forest. So we have some notable semiconductor companies, including Intel, Analog Devices, Jira, a number of others. And a lot of these companies are poised and ready to make investments in responses to the federal dollars that are coming down. Here in Oregon, we have a specific tool called the Strategic Investment Program, SIP, which is a critical tool for supporting Oregon semiconductor business relocations and expansions. So as some companies consider taking advantage of some of the federal dollars, they'll probably also be looking at using the SIP tool. And here at the county, we have a specific role with SIP. We are in the position to be lead negotiators with private companies when it comes to the SIP. And so we want to be prepared if and when companies come to work with us on that. So here is a little bit of roadmap of the journey that we've been on here to update the county's SIP policy. So like I mentioned, we came before your board on July 18th and provided an overview of the SIP tool. We were joined by consultants from Echo Northwest that did a great job of talking about how the tool works and the benefits of the tool. Here we are today on September fifth to talk about some of the proposed changes to the policy. And should your board direct staff, we would come back later on this fall with an action item to officially adopt the changes. Now, something I want to get into here, there's also an additional item there on the right, which is in twenty 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 three, twenty four, a new economic development project to further refine S I P policy and process. I'm going to get into this a little bit in our conversation today, but the short of it is, as we got into looking at the county's S I P policy and in particular, when it comes to the process that the county uses in the evaluation guidelines, there's a lot of detailed stuff in there. And you know, we have choices around doing things fast, doing things well, doing things thoroughly. And as we looked at that, we really think that we need more time to thoroughly evaluate how the process and the evaluation guidelines, the fee that the county can can send out to companies, can can ask companies to pay. We need a little more time to take a look at that and make sure that that, those changes are done well and reflect the the detailed direction that your board has provided to staff. So I'll talk just a little bit more about that too. The policy questions that I have today are 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 three. They are, what are the board's reflections and or concerns regarding the proposed changes to the county's S I P policy? What is missing from the proposed changes and asking whether you'd like staff to come back to a business meeting to with an action item to adopt the changes into an updated policy? And here's our one slide. We're going to just do the briefest of recaps of the S I P tool, especially for the public that's listening in here. Again, I direct folks to go back to the July eighteen packet if they want more details, but I'll turn it to Aaron Doyle, our senior government relations manager to talk a little bit about S I P.
Um good afternoon, Board, Aaron Doyle, Government Relations Manager. As so still, we clearly rehearsed our scripts and stepped on a few of my lines of refer back to our July, but the Strategic Investment Program or SIP has some standards that are set in state law that have to be met before we can reach even start the process of negotiating. So this just, this slide is here to highlight what those changes are. Because of the timing of when changes from the legislative session are taking place, these are a little bit old numbers, but they won't change until September twenty fifth of this year. But in short, there is a minimum investment that has to be made by the company in order to qualify. And that changes based on the location of the investment, rural versus urban. And then that will then modify what is the initial taxable portion. So what they have to pay property taxes on regardless of the rest of it. It will also then reset the community service fee because there's a threshold of what has to be paid in lieu. That number, the tax, the minimum investment, the taxable portions are all going to be indexed to the consumer price indexing numbers and shift from year to year as we enter into the negotiations. The year of the negotiation is what will set the terms of what those numbers are. And then that property tax abatement that's provided for within that agreement must last fifteen years pursuant to statute. So um after these standards are set, we negotiate the rest and that's where the S I P policy becomes vital to how we approach any potential S I P agreement. Turn it back to Matt.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. So from here, we're going to be talking about the proposed changes to the county's S I P policy. Prior to the conversation, to the presentation, the conversation that we had with your board on July eighteenth, we reviewed and thought about some of the direction and conversations that your board has had to think about some of the potential changes and feedback input that you might have on the S I P policy. And from that, we we came up with identified three, three themes, three principles. Those are the first three that you see on the left side of the screen here. So I'll just read them. The first is supporting marginalized communities is fundamental to promoting equitable and equitable economy that provides opportunity for all. Government transparency is crucial for providing community with information about decision making and investments. And urban service provision is the job of city governments. So those are, those are a few principles that we heard from previous board conversations. During the July eighteenth presentation and discussion, there was three additional statements that that we took from that conversation. Those are the three points you see on the right and I'll read these. The first is the county should seek to better operationalize its S I P policy. So I'll talk about that in just a second on the next slide. New S I P agreements should address the additional costs of public services created by associated economic growth. And the third is to make an informed decision about an S I P and for better transparency, the county should assess the potential benefits and costs of each S I P project. So that was the additional feedback that that we received and have staff have used to think about and modify the county's S I P policy that we're bringing to you today. In the county's S I P policy, there are four main sections. The last time that the county's S I P policy was put together was in two thousand and six. There are four sections. There's a program overview. There's program objectives, evaluation guidelines and the review process. We're going to focus the discussion here today and this is the primary location where staff has sought to to modify the policy. These two sections, as I have mentioned, really we think is it's going to take more time to make thorough changes again to to the, to the fee, to the process and really actually even consider whether all of those sections need to be in the policy in general. I do want to just take one more second here to also talk about some of these the ways that we might think about changing the evaluation guidelines and the review process and to speak directly to your board's feedback around operationalizing the county's S I P policy. So we talk about operationalizing a policy. It is about the implementation steps, the dedicating resources, the following through, the tracking of the work that is embedded within a policy. So I think there's a few ways that we can think about operationalizing the county's S I P policy and these were things that we would propose to evaluate and address in a new economic development project in this coming year. So one of those things is assessment of the costs and benefits of an S I P agreements. So how do we know that the return on investment to community from S I P is a good deal? When do we know that it is passing that kind of ration, that rationale test of this is, this is going to be a greater benefit to the community than than what we're giving up? So perhaps we can think about an economic impact assessment or a cost and benefit assessment, perhaps by a third party that helps your board, uh decision makers, understand whether this S I P deal is worth pursuing and worth worth moving forward. Another area here where we'd want to take a look is around project tracking and reporting. This gets, I think, to your direction around transparency and good governance. How are we making sure and making sure that the company is being accountable to the promises that are embedded within the SIP agreement? And how can we do a good job, the right job of communicating outwardly to community about how that company is doing those things and the impacts and the outcomes to the community and to local government. So that's something we also want to explore when it comes to operationalizing the county SIP. Uh I think also the third one is improvements and clarifications to the S I P process. And I will note that actually this is something that we staff have already started in creating, for example, templates for a non-disclosure agreements, templates to a pre-application meeting, just so we're ready if and when companies come knocking on the door that we can provide them with clear guidelines around how are you going to move through the process? So I think that last one is really around around some kind of detailed process pieces that that we're looking at. One more slide here about operationalizing the S I P before we get into the program objectives. I wanted to just put this up here because S I P is actually a unique economic incentive. There are a number of economic incentives even here in Oregon, like the enterprise zone incentive that is more procedural and is kind of a if then, if you do this, then you get that. And they can kind of move, companies can kind of move through those incentives without much of a public process, but a more administrative process. And the S I P is unique because S I P has this more public process. And I think as we think about improving the county's policy and the process, something that we need to be considering is the perspective of the business. And our businesses think about reducing risk and increasing certainty so that they can follow through on in making sure that these investments that are planned are profitable and and go the way that they have proposed and move forward. So as as we think about moving towards improving process, staff is going to be thinking about clear expectations for participating companies and making sure that the process is clear, that it's transparent and that it's efficient. So that's something else I just. Um I'm going to pause just briefly here because the rest of the slides are really focused on the modifications to the program objectives. But I know that I've already kind of covered a bunch and I've talked about this approach to a project. So Chair Harrington, Board, I know if we want to pause here for any questions or reflections before we get into the program objectives.
I know I have a question, but do any of my colleagues have any questions?
Well, go ahead. I'll defer to you and then it's mine's very specific. It's number four, an explanation of that, but you can answer. I want you to jump in there before.
I'm a little lost. I'm feeling a little lost. And maybe I'm not lost, but so there's the current policy. There's what the state has enabled and that's where the current policy rests and there's processes that happen. Now there's all this CHIPS Act support or as authorized through the federal government, the state legislature has taken some action. So we have this current set of information in place. What we're talking about is making some adjustments to that. For a potential update in some timeframe. And you're also talking about how there, you've taken a look and there are some other things that could happen in twenty three, twenty four. Okay, so there's current, there's updated and there's updated again. I don't track all the CHIPS Act deadlines. But through the media, it sounds like, well, a bunch of this is going to happen real fast and is just waiting for something. And I'm wondering, when we had a presentation before the legislative session or during the early parts of the legislative, earlier this year, before July, when we were talking about S I Ps and the current what had has been in place, I spoke pretty firmly and crisply that those terms are too low. And I don't want to be in a situation of being asked to approve and a new agreement under the old terms. I guess, can I call them the old terms? Well, under the
Existing terms.
Existing terms, yes. But at the same time, the twenty three, twenty four terms, you're talking, that's fiscal year or could go all the way out to the end of calendar year twenty four? I'm like, ooh, so what's the timeline look like? Because I don't want to be in a situation where we're forced to use the two thousand and six and the older legislation stuff and have that carry forward or haunt us until we have an update sooner rather than later, but the full twenty three, twenty four possible updates. So you know me, I like a timeline.
Let let me start to answer here and then, Aaron, if you have some thoughts as well. I think to your, to your final part of the the question around timeline, I think that staff, I think we could complete that evaluation within the fiscal year. So by by June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, I think that is something that we could do and and appreciate the the question. We could be more clear in future presentations. I think, I think there's a couple, a couple of things to consider here. I think we're very interested in getting the board's input on the program objectives now in a timely way because the program objectives really are the succinct statements where the board's interests and principles around how staff should think about and negotiate an S I P deal are embedded within the policy. And they're, you know, again, they're succinct, they're clear. There's a few of them. The evaluation guidelines and the the review process, I think, can be refined. And I think that the existing ones are still potentially in line with the changes to the program objectives as modified. But I think that we can do better in changing those pieces, the evaluation guidelines and the review process to create again, a more transparent and efficient process going forward. So my recommendation would be that we take a look at the program objectives so that the board's desires are are embedded here within the policy. And then staff go and do that more thorough deep dive into the process so that going forward, we have those additional pieces, those additional details in place. But I think it's going to take more time for us to to figure out kind of the policy pieces and where those are each kind of connected to, to, you know, existing work that the county is doing.
So to, and also just to kind of match with that, the legislative changes go into place, that those terms, those legislative terms, the standards set by the state are not affected by this change. They go into place, they become the ruling basis by which S I Ps have to meet their thresholds and and pay their minimums regardless of any changes that this board might make to the county's policy. The county's policy then goes beyond to that place where we sit, where we can negotiate what we want. And by having an initial adoption of updated program objectives, that sends that clearer message of this is what we're prioritizing. This is the language of twenty twenty three's board saying, here's what we want to see come out of any S I P that staff will negotiate and then bring forward through that public process. We're setting the objectives. Then those evaluation criteria that are in the twenty, the two thousand and six policy, the the process that are in the two thousand and six policy can be further examined to see if through an iterative process, if we do this, what makes sense, what gets us the answers to say, did we meet the program objectives? Does the process meet our program objectives? Have we operationalized what this board has required of staff to do? And so you give that that secondary look of that going into those finer details, which are more implementation than policy. So it's the, I analogize it to my world. When we set the legislative agenda, you tell the G R team, this is what we do. This is, this is where we base all of our policy decisions through those principles. That's what program objectives are in my mind. And then the priorities are, you know, very specific. So but it's not a policy document that it tells you how, it tells me how to lobby that to affect the outcomes, which is more where those evaluation guidelines and review processes kind of sit. So as we do further analysis, you can step first into the program objectives, update them from two thousand and six sometime relatively quickly based on your feedback on this and then allow Matt's expertise to figure out how the evaluation guidelines and review processes fit within that policy and have a further conversation with the board later in the year of this fiscal year.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Does that help with a more clear set of timelines?
Yes, it does. That the legislature has taken actions.
That's those terms.
Yep, yep, that is helpful. It causes me to realize that seeing media articles over the last couple of months that, and they they vary from, you know, all we're doing is subsidizing corporations to this is what companies need in order to invest in our country and advance the skills and 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 productization of new technology in our. In our global market. And so I find myself bouncing between. Some gross generalization one way or the other to make sure that we. Help. The wider community know that these are tools, right? That companies do choose to invest for a variety of reasons. And these are tools to help ensure that. As our county is positioned to be home for these investments. That we are doing good work to engage and to go into this with open eyes. So that the company can be comfortable about their prospects in the longer term. And that we as representatives for the community are ensuring that. There is a process such that the community is getting value as well. We're not just getting a sell, sales job from a company. And that's as eloquent as I can put it. So. All I can say is, for example, I saw that Intel submitted their application to DEQ for new air quality permits. I downloaded the zip files, I looked at all those spreadsheets and went. Used my calculator to see what two X and three X levels are and I'm like, oh, hey. Wonder what that means for public health and. You know, good for them for being able to do all those calculations and represent all those different chemicals. I don't know what all that means for the neighboring communities to the industrial areas and. You know. Having learned a lot about this, the siding and expansion of I five north around the neighborhoods. Where it split the middle of those neighborhoods and growing asthma rates and all of that. Are we making sure that part of. That community service fee can go towards funding the public health programs to make sure that future generations. Have clean air or or at least have medical care, you know, things like that, right? I don't know what I don't know. Anyway, it's all a mystery. Don't mean to be so long winded. Commissioner Willie, your question.
Yeah. Well, my question on specifically on the program objectives was number four. I don't understand generate increased assessed property tax value. We're kind of bundling all that into the zip agreement, aren't we? And then I'm going to refer back to the numbers back on slide five, which. Well, I which I have more questions about that. And again, I have the the two thousand and six. Zip agreement here that I've been comparing. But anyway, so yeah, what I liked, seeing him wandering all over, I like what I see here. As program objectives, valuation guidelines, those four, I I liked what I saw there. Always willing to have conversations to. What else could we put in there without being too onerous, I guess? But. That number four kind of stuck out to me like, okay, that sounds counterintuitive to.
Might I suggest Commissioner Willie that we go through each one of the program objectives? If we get there, I'd be happy to jump into details.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't think we were going to go. Deep into weeds on this. Okay. Yeah, and I'll hold off my questions on that.
Happy to go wherever the board wants to go.
Those are the weeds we intended to be in.
Okay.
So let's, let's, let's do that. Let's go through each one of the program, program objectives.
Oh, I see.
So this slide has all nine program objectives as stated in the two thousand and six policy. I'm not going to read them. We have additional slides here where we'll talk about each of the changes. One by one, I'm going to make sure I have my own cheat sheet here so I don't miss any. So we'll go through these and please interrupt with questions as needed. The first couple of program objectives from two thousand and six talk about jobs. And the first one is really primary to the goal of the SIP program. This is about talking about creating and retaining high wage jobs here in the county. Just a minor change here around using more inclusive language. We changed residents to community members here, but still think that the tenant of this tool should be used primarily looking for high paying, good jobs. Is is vital here. So that one's a minor, a minor change.
Although. If we're not talking about commu, if trying to get at community members. Of Washington County. I mean, if we're only looking. At. The jobs may be here, but people are choosing to live elsewhere. Then it's not. You're not living here, it's not helping us with the property taxes, so. I guess. I don't see. It's really the resident community members as opposed to.
So it's because, sorry, it does say create or retain jobs for Washington County community members. The term resident has a propensity to.
Yep.
Trigger related to immigration status.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I missed that.
Yeah, I thought that's why that was.
On the prior line.
Which was being changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, Erin.
Thank you.
I just sometimes I remember reasons.
That's great.
Great, thanks.
The second one, again, about jobs in the two thousand and six language uses some language that we don't use as much today. So talking about lower skilled workers. And we also thought in changing to more inclusive language and and current modern languages are also an opportunity here. To reframe this one up to acknowledge the partnerships that we have with other organizations, whether educational institutions, CBOs. That that all together work on workforce development. So the change. I'm sorry, say again.
In unions here. Or including.
Yeah, including unions. Thank you, Commissioner Treese. So this one, we have completely rewritten again to to reframe kind of to a modern thinking of workforce development. So change to provide or support workforce development services to promote economic mobility of the local workforce. Our economic development mobility is this concept of helping folks move, move through their careers, getting again, better, higher paying wages. That's a change there.
Going and or.
You know, that's a great question, Commissioner Willie. I think it's an or. And I think it's an or because we are not asking these companies directly to do the workforce development. But to support, participate, be an active participant in the workforce system here in Washington County.
I see where you're going there. Okay, I agree.
But how did, how were companies held accountable to show that not only they had entry level jobs? But that there was that mobility of moving up into higher paying jobs?
How might they be held accountable?
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah. I'm using the old phraseology. I I get that. Yeah.
I think, I think that's something that we can look into Chair Harrington, but I think where it goes is really into. The the career ladders that are in embedded within workforce development programs and services. So to reference, for example, the Quick Start Program. Which is a program housed at PCC's Willow Creek, which is a quick ten day training for folks that want to get into the semiconductor business. That immediately enables them to get into an entry level position within some of our local semiconductor firms. And there are additional course modules and I know within specific companies, they have also additional trainings for folks to move up from there.
Yeah, so here's my problem. The way you've described it, both in the old language and the new language is all about how we redouble our efforts or we invest in. And it's like.
So turning back to the the memo that supported the July eighteenth, this is how I remember anything as I have to write it down. If you look at some of the additional terms that we've added into our SIP negotiated agreements. We do make requirements that the companies put money into programs and as directed by the county. So they're not our resources, but Intel or Genentech have paid into these programs. For example, in the two thousand and fourteen Intel Agreement, it's a thousand dollars per year for six years upon contract execution to nonprofit organizations fulfilling a public person. Purpose in the county as selected by the county administrator. Similar, they heard with Genentech, we required financial and in kind education for workforce initiatives. Educational programs for students in local educational institutions and eligibility for local professionals and researchers for Genentech grants. So that's how, to use that word, operationalizing. This is how we take an objective and turn it into a term of the agreement itself. To ensure that we're creating those career pathways as part of what they're investing in. And also requiring them to not try to use our money to pay their, but to put their money into the programs as well.
Yeah, and my problem is I get the lower end. Right, it's the, but how do you demonstrate that it's leading to mobility? Or going from lower end to higher end? As opposed to just hiring people with graduate level degrees achieved from elsewhere and attracting them to jobs here? That's the part I'm struggling with.
If you jump into evaluation guidelines, which is a different subject. Question number two, part of the description is a program designed to provide upward wage mobility must include training, support systems. And a defined process for moving into higher paying jobs or achieving higher pay. So that's one of the evaluation guidelines that is incorporated in the old document that kind of covers that a little bit. So I get where you're going, but seems this kind of all blends together. Pardon me?
Was the old document in the packet?
It, that was part of the.
No, I had the old document from the first, first time around, so. Yep.
Chair Harrington, it is a terrific question. And I think actually it it highlights one of the reasons why not, not to put the question off. But I think that there's an opportunity in this, this new project to be thinking about, again, project tracking here. So is there an opportunity for us to require that these companies demonstrate the economic mobility is happening? Or provide more details around how entry level positions move up there?
So I remain skeptical around the. Mobility part.
Okay.
Doesn't matter if you're looking at the oh six column or the twenty twenty three column. Can we spend money? Yes. Can we give money away? Well, yes. Can we give money away just adequately? Yes. But how you demonstrate to the community from period of time to period of time. That these things are actually be achieving community good is the hard part. That's what I'm struggling with.
And I think that's where Matt was talking about looking at how we do all of these things. It's going to be a longer term to get into the specifics. But having the objective there means that we have to start with that as part of the negotiations and then how we provide that. Community back out, that input back out to the community, other than through the anecdotes that we've heard throughout the legislative session. That's not data. We'll figure it out.
We're gonna have to do it before. I can feel like I can vote on such a thing. Such an agreement, I mean.
We're, we're taking note of that. Thank you, Chair Harrington.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
I'm going to move to program objective three. Which again, we have changed again with some modernization of lang, of language here. So this is, we've changed it to talking about good corporate citizenship. So and good corporate citizenship is. The the concept of companies not kind of myopically being focused on kind of shareholder value or just their own financial interests. But considering community, environmental, other types of in impacts and outcomes more broadly.
Think on that one, and I'm expecting this to be a dynamic conversation. We're gonna need to footnote some best known method or best known definition.
I agree. I was like, what is corporate citizenship? How does that translate to removing the board residents because of folks who are, so I didn't know the. I get it. We're talking about community members in here, we're talking about businesses, but I appreciate the chair mentioning the footnote. I I looked it up. I I'll admit I cheated.
Thank you for that and we will, we will take note of that and I think we can look to change some of that language and make it clearer as well.
So coming up on number four.
Coming up on number four, so number four, there is no change in the language here. Whoops, slide, thank you. So number four is about generating increased assessed property tax value. And the concept here is more broadly than just the project itself. That these incentives create ripple effects through the economy and are generally in the long term raising assessed tax value going forward. And you recall that, you know, this is a fifteen year tax abatement after that, property goes back on the tax rolls. So it is a, it is a investment into this company that's going to create more kind of economic growth. In the long run is the, is the concept.
So. We have in the state, both urban and rural, and I don't think rural has been in place. For the ten years or so that they take effect to lower level. And I think it may only be ten years versus fifteen years.
What's rural. Rural SIPs sit in the same fifteen.
Same fifteen year, it's just a different level.
It's a different level of investment and rural is defined in statute to meet certain population thresholds.
It's there, but do we have any place outside of basically west that complies, that would comply with the rural?
No, our, our understanding is that SIPs in Washington County would be all under the urban criteria.
Well, and what I was wondering is, do we have, has there been anywhere after the time period, the company is. Shut down, moved out. Do we have any examples of failure?
Using zip agreements that have existed from, this is Erin working off of memory, so I will double check myself after this. But Washington County was the first to implement, we're the first ones to have anything roll off of a SIP. Everything else is currently still in a SIP state. So we haven't seen the post effect of any SIP agreement in any county, other than in Washington County, where we've just seen additional SIP agreements with the same company. From what is reported to Business Oregon about job growth in those communities that do rural SIPs. Because meet those population thresholds, they aren't seeing a slowing or a disinvestment or anyone walking away towards the end of. Some of them are at like eleven and twelve years of age. They're still seeing economic growth and development and an increased property tax base around those types of projects. Which look very different because the types of property investments they're making are really different. There are wind farms, for example, or there is a, I can't remember. I think they make toilet paper out in Columbia County as subject to a SIP agreement. They had to remodel an entire warehouse, specific factory to to change, which was really helpful during the pandemic.
I'm wondering if it may help us on this number four to say. Generate increased assessed property tax value. Through the duration of the agreement and. With the completion of the agreement timeframe. Because that's what you're trying to get at. I thought.
Well, but there, there is a, you know, you asked the question, has anyone failed to make fifteen years? And the answer is no, but there is a recapture provision in here that should they not make that fifteen year and they fail that to pay it back. So we're kind of covering both sides of that base.
But what I heard them describing is it's all within the confines of this agreement, not the direct and the indirect. Not the direct and the indirect property tax generation because employees live in the county, blah, blah, blah. So I, I was thinking about trying to help our community members understand what it is we're at.
Yeah.
And they're, I mean, because they have to make a minimum investment and pay taxes on a subset of that investment. It's almost guaranteed that this can be met, um, unless they fail, in which case we recapture any discounts.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to uh, number five. So number five is another place where we've had um, substantial changes uh, to the language used here. And the changes that are made are really to focus on the full ecosystem of uh, businesses uh, within the county. And to um, think about the expectation that companies that receive the S I P incentive. Look to intentionally support um, other local small businesses uh, with a strong focus of those that have been left out or kept out of opportunity in the past. And I will say that um, the language used here also aligns with um, some of the county's work led by a procurement around supplier diversity. So we're really excited about this one.
I was just gonna ask if, if it did line up and because I don't remember hearing it quite like this. But it was, I, I don't remember hearing that uh, facing discriminatory barriers previously. I've heard BIPOC minority owned businesses.
And just to jump on board, I bet exactly where I was going with this. I don't read, you know, procurement verbiage. I don't, don't remember seeing that in there, but. So yeah, I'd just like it to be consistent with like, with Pam's great, yeah.
Well, now also located in the metropolitan area versus located within the county and in the marketplace. Could you enlighten me a little bit more?
Yes, I think um, uh, you know, marketplace refers really to um, the supply chain for these companies. Rather than a specific uh, geography. Um, and so um, it is, you know, we're focused on uh, let's see, I'm just gonna read it. Encourage the amount of goods and services purchased from businesses located within the county. And specifically from businesses owned by individuals that have faced discriminatory barriers to participation in the marketplace. So the marketplace.
Support within the county.
It is, yeah, but changing it to support within the county as well.
Why, why move from metropolitan area to only Washington County is my question.
You know, I, I think uh, just to focus in on uh, on, on local businesses within the county, we'd be happy to change it to metropolitan area as well. That is uh, how the supply chains uh, work. Uh, you know, there are companies across the metropolitan area there.
I can tell you if Montloma County wrote something like this and said, only Montloma County, I would react. I, I, I'm more comfortable with the wider verb.
Okay, okay, okay.
And maybe they would say only in Montloma County, and maybe every other SIP program does say only within the county. I just wasn't sure what led you to narrow it, that's all.
Sure, uh, we, we, we do want to be uh, good uh, regional partners, don't we? So I think we can use more inclusive language here across me- uh, metropolitan area.
I, I appreciated the specificity in this. I, when I think about the metropolitan area, I think about Detroit County, Detroit County, and I think of this. To be in a more specific to Washington County, this, you know, Washington County business. I appreciated the speci- like how specific this was and how it sort of narrowed down that the focus is Washington County. I also had the same reaction uh, differently. While I appreciated number five, the more specific to Washington County. Question number three, uh, you changed it to local economy. So there's a discu- like, and I forgot to mention it when I was speaking earlier. It, it seemed a bit of, uh, we widen it, you took out the county, um, countywide economic base and you changed it to local economy. When I think about local economy, I think about the metropolitan area. Or.
Oh, boy, so we're, we're struggling here.
So I think for me, I, I wanted to know more of your thinking. Why number three, you changed it to local economy as opposed to countywide?
Uh, sure, yeah, number three, and it, it sounds like the, the feedback that I'm hearing is that we could uh, do better to do a review of consistent language throughout all of these. So, so that's something that we can go back and do to make sure that we're, we're can be inconsistent, whether we're talking about local or the county or the metropolitan areas.
So, and when is local county and when is local bigger? But not as big as state.
We will, we will look at making that more consistent to directly answer your question, uh, Commissioner Fi. And number three, um, the reference to local economy there is really thinking about smaller businesses. And um, uh, making sure that um, they are again, kind of intentionally being tied into these investments.
In Washington County, local businesses in Washington.
In, in, in Washington County, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
I'm, I'm not a voice for saying we can't focus just on Washington County. I was really just trying to understand the nature of the change, so.
Well, the reality is, we're the one giving a property taxes, so you know, we can be a little piggyish about this.
That is true.
Thinking that way.
But also, if you remember, and you, I'm sure that you've seen this chair, many years ago, Intel put together a stratosphere of their influence in the region. And their sphere of influence stretched well beyond the metropolitan area. It was Salem, it was up the gorge, it was up north in Washington, it was huge. And so we can put all the verbiage we want into in here, but when they have that kind of influence and a company that's gonna invest a billion or two or five billion, they're gonna have that same sphere of influence, no matter what our little agreement here says, buy local. They're gonna, they're gonna have a much larger footprint.
Yeah, great, well, I, thank you, I appreciate the discussion and, and again, it sounds like we should go back and take a look at how we're kind of talking about uh, impacts and geography.
It's also, yeah, I, it's also into, oh, I'm sorry.
I continue to struggle with, how do we meet or speak? Address the skeptics, right? That's what I was really getting at earlier. I'm really struggling with that.
What are the skeptics? Washington County skeptics, or are they regional skeptics or statewide skeptics? I mean, because.
I know there are skeptics here, Washington Countywide, and so I'm just trying to address that.
And I also, with all due respect.
There will always be skeptics.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, and, and I don't know that this probably helps, I don't know that it solves, but it helps. And I also wanted to call out that we talk about encouraging the amount of goods, not restricting it. So that's a, you know, I, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable.
It's a blend of the pragmatic versus um, the outcomes we hope to see is to grow an entire ecosystem. Matt and I, and when I talk to the legislature, it's about the ecosystem and sometime that ecosystem is within the county and sometimes it's within the region. And sometimes it's across the state because um, I think what we've seen both from the Echo Northwest information that they've provided. But also the information that Intel talks about what, what the investments here have done. It's probably gonna be impossible to spend all their, you know, um, lower developers uh, money in Washington County. But they're, they spend a lot of it and it brings those industries into the county, which creates more value to meet number four. But also um, economic opportunity for workforce um, getting into these jobs that become part of that supply economy. Um, and if we want to be a little selfish, I think sometimes when it's our dollars on the line, the community needs to see that we want that reinvestment back here in, in the county. And that other counties will respect that as well. I'm sure they'll go for their gold as well.
Great, thank you, Erin. Uh, moving to number six, uh, small change from number six. Number six had talked about uh, in the two thousand six policy, meeting land use, transportation and neighborhood design objectives. We inserted the word policy there, policy and design. It's not just about uh, the design of these things, but also the policies, whether it's that land use, transportation has uh, that the county has through land use and transportation. Uh, and other things there, so I want to make sure that's aligned.
And this is where I think about all the trucks that through twenty nineteen and earlier. We're coming down First Avenue here. With, from the Intel site and um, policy and design objectives aside. It's not like that road's been improved. It's definitely alligatored and trenched since, so. Number six. Yeah, we've used the S I P to pay, to subsidize the U U A portion of L U T. We've used the countywide resource to subsidize the U U As, that's what number six means to me.
Anytime we, anytime a company decides to build a new facility, and let's just pretend it's not at Ronner Acres, let's pretend it's out in some of the new space. There's going to be a significant tax paid for road improvements, infrastructure, all those kinds of things. That's what I would say that's their contribution is. And it's improving their immediate area that they do have impact on transportation and all those kinds of things. So we're already asking them, actually not, probably not asking them, we're already mandating those kinds of policies onto their project, and so I don't know what this is.
So.
Good this is.
My, my comment isn't a beef or a skeptic. It's gotten harder to see that information. I had to seek out our C A O office's copy of the assessment and taxation report because we as commissioners are no longer provided a hard copy to see that in fact the property tax rolls do increase by that very same example you've provided. It's gotten harder for me as a commissioner to get access to that information.
Is that because that's a city approved project versus a, our L U T?
It's because we've made it harder for us to easily get the information because I couldn't find it on our website. So, which is an internal problem. But it just makes it harder to see the value that he's talking about.
Yeah, but I don't think number six refers necessarily to that. It sounds to me like this is kind of an ongoing, we may come back around in a couple of years and say, hey, you know that road that almost connects up to where you're going, you know? We'd kind of like you to improve that road too. This seems like it's, it's an ongoing ask potentially for fifteen years. And I don't.
I don't, I, I don't quite understand what this is really getting at. I don't think it's something we've actually used.
So in, in looking at the two thousand six um, evaluation criteria and um, implementation. I think where this has really ended up focusing is on the immediate impacts of a site. So looking at what do turn lanes turn into, where are people living and then connecting to their jobs? And um, perhaps has not been the most clearly executed of the um, two thousand six program objectives. But it has been really focused in on making sure the obvious infrastructure um, impacts are mitigated. And that's part of the overall SIP agreement um, in, in how they pay their fees, that we don't waive S D Cs along with all of this. That they pay their, their system development charges, that they pay their impact, traffic impact fees in that manner. And I think by adding the word policy and design objectives, it provides us an ability to think bigger than just the cost to pave a road or add a right turn lane, um, but think bigger about what it means to do comprehensive land use as required by the state to match housing, employment and um, you know, transit and policies that this board sets for the county in, in undertaking its um, land use and plant and transportation obligations.
So being on the second of these proposed changes. What's hard for me is to see how that program objective from two thousand and six has provided value, has helped us for each of these, and similarly how a twenty twenty three change is thought of as continuing to help.
You know what, I'm, um, maybe I can get you some information about that. Because I do know that, again, Intel being uh, the big dog has contributed to improvements in transportation and neighborhoods around them well beyond their initial development days. So um, let me, I just remember this from way back when, in my early days of being mayor. That there was certainly, Intel was a very good partner when coming to say, we need to do this. And they would participate.
I think it's also something that Matt and I can work with L U T to provide more information on, on how the county specifically. Um, not just the project has been impacted by this requirement. And if that necessitates further conversation to make sure that this objective is clearly written and, and measurable in a way that we can show the benefit of an S I P through this program objective, we can rework that language as well.
I think it goes to our being open and transparent ourselves.
Yeah, great, yeah, thank you, we can do that research, uh, for sure.
Feeling very hand wavy.
Probably a lot of work, but that begs me to ask, is there a way to do any, all these objectives using the two thousand six and SIP agreement to sort of um, to demonstrate the impact of each objective? Or is that a lot of?
Previous uh, agreements, Commissioner Fi? Yes, I think that's some research that, that we can do, um, is take a look at how these were operationalized um, with the agreements that went underneath the two thousand six S I P agreement.
At a general level, um, I think you each have a track record of helping us make good policy, public policy decisions. So I continue to have that faith, I'm just having trouble relating to it.
Sorry, not relating to the faith, but relating to this.
Yeah, we, we are happy to.
Where you're trying to lead us.
I, I think it's, I think it goes back to the conversations that Matt and I have had with um, this board both in July and before and during the legislative session of how do we make sure we're meeting the obligations of um, what it takes to run a good county? And to provide all of the levels of service that are required? And how are we making sure that not just you, but the public can understand that as well?
Thank you.
Yeah, it, it might, I might just add to that, uh, this is one of the reasons why we're asking for a little more time to, to take a look at the evaluation guidelines and for the process. Because it is um, it is within those sections where we're gonna be thinking about these details. You know, what, what might we require, what might we encourage, uh, what's doable, what's that kind of balance look like? And to your point, Commissioner Fi, how has this been done in the past? And so we'd love to uh, come back and present some of that research um, for what's, what's happened in the past and, and propose um, how we might change those actions. Uh, again, through a little bit more of an involved project.
So are we gonna continue?
Yes. Okay. Terrific, we are on uh, seven, eight and nine. So uh, no proposed changes to, to seven, eight and nine, uh, proposing to keep um, those as they are in the two thousand six uh, policy. So uh, number seven is about mitigating ne- negative impacts on the provision of public services. And we hear loud and clear that that's um, a priority of your board. Number eight is about kind of the, this test of reasonableness. And I think, again, we can uh, do some research uh, to see how this one was operationalized. I think it's um, using a language like reasonable, like how was that tested? I think that will be.
Every five years, how are the community members going to know that there's something is being done? So it's reasonable and does provide benefits. That's, right, I'm having trouble figuring out, okay, there's the initial policy and that's used to approve one of these things. But along the way, how is the county doing any level of uh, analyzing, reporting? analyzing, reporting, and report out?
Terrific question, and something that we'd love to to dig into and propose a new tracking system.
That'd be a program.
So again, just an objective, that higher step, that's almost, that gets into the process by which we would be thinking through how these programs process at the county level. But by having this objective, it directs staff to make sure that that gets worked into the overall agreements, but also the expectations we have of ourselves within the county and within county staff moving forward. So as Matt and whoever else gets pulled into the long-term, longer-term review process. But by change, by maintaining these objectives here, we're still saying that accountability has a place in these agreements. But what we need to review is how we present that accountability back out to the public, which is less an objective of the program in reaching and negotiated, but more of the process that we need to put in place as a county, and we need to figure out what that best looks like, what will actually inform the community, what will actually provide the information so that we can every, systemically and and through a routine process, show that we have done our work and that it's meeting the objectives.
When I was reading the objectives, the the example that came to my mind, that I was like, is it like this, was the COVID paycheck incentives that every tax file or children thought. So I think I was, my question about this was, what do those incentives look like? Because when I think, currently, when we think by incentives is check you're getting. And recently, a community member reached out and asked about the governor's $1,500 the governors providing, something they read in there. They were ahead of the curve with the news information, but they sent out a question about does everyone get money from the state of Oregon, because there's so much money? That was exactly, and I had no idea, so we'll go back to you to do just a little bit of a catch up with the news that they were reading. But anyways, long story short is, that's what I thought about, extra money that comes to taxpayers, that check. So I'm.
Are you talking about the kicker?
The kicker certainly is there, but.
I think they were, yeah, they they were talking about the kicker, the governor, Oregon's governor.
So what I, so what I hear you asking, Commissioner Fai, is how do we define what it, what that incentive, what that payback to the community looks like? Traditionally is seen as I got dollars out of something, but how do we identify for the community what that pay, what that kicker is back to the community out of?
Very well said. The best cleanup right there. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. That's great. I'm moving to the last one here, and so we are proposing to add one program objective that was not included. And so, by the way, I have kept the numbering the same from the 2006 policy. So if your board wishes to reorder any of these, or they're open to do that, but just for consistency, I didn't change the numbering. Proposing to add a program objective that reflects the desire from the board to think more about equitable and inclusive economic development. And so the proposed program objective would be advanced job and career advancement opportunities for groups that have been economically or socially marginalized. That's the, that's the last proposed change to the program objectives.
Okay, so to figure out if number, the proposed number 10 is working, that means there has to be a system by which job and career advancement within said company is available.
Yes, and so I think this is, this is part of some additional work that staff can do to be thinking about how, again, these incentives can be tracked and the metrics that are embedded with the agreements can be tracked and reported out.
Next slide.
So moving to our policy questions here for the board. Any additional, any reflections or concerns about the proposed changes to the S I P policy? What's missing? And do you direct staff to come back with the proposed changes to the program objectives?
I think we've given you a lot of feedback already. So I guess I would suggest you incorporate those into this. I don't, there may be more conversation about that. So we'll just wait and see. I would encourage probably that you provide everybody with a copy of the O six agreement, so they can do some comparities, and just we'll look at that.
I consider a briefing's off to every single time this topic comes up, we can drag our briefing book with us that has those items in it.
Yeah, and also probably a link to the July 18 meeting for a refresh there too. So this, this does require some homework.
And I'm wondering, excuse me, I'm looking back at the why do we have program objectives piece. Now that we've had this discussion, that information is more important to me again, and somehow I think I need to, I need to be focused there as well, and that that may need some more fleshing out a bit. Examples, that type of thing, I I think might be helpful, because I'm getting bogged down as, when I talked about communication, Erin, you're right. Doesn't belong there, but it wasn't until I went back and read this that I did, yeah. So I'm, I'm just saying that it would, I need to see how it works in the system. And that that might be more helpful. But this is, this is good work, and what you've done is you've grown up the program objectives from 2006 and focused in on what our our priorities are, and I appreciate that work. I think the feedback that you've got, though, is also helpful in terms of consistency and and thinking about different parts of the picture. But I I'm not sure how I would change this. I'd be willing to read through it with somebody and say, you know, maybe this is an example.
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you for taking all these questions, and I think you have your work cut out, and I will invite myself to a briefing with both of you. I'll ask Brenda to schedule. I am, I do need to have a discussion, but one of the last question, well, I like a 10 objectives, because it's a roundup number, but number 10 and number two, the two objectives. Well, I love every word that's in number 10 here that you're proposing. What I wanted to know, what are you gonna, what are you accomplishing in objective 10 that you couldn't accomplish two by expanding some of the words in there? But but I I do agree with you, 10 sounds better than, but but I'll, I'll have a briefing with you to just discuss some of the, before you come back to the board.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you. Great.
So for me? Yeah, okay. Not excited about the questions. Frankly, what I see before me is an opportunity of topic fatigue. Ms. Angie's got a big challenge ahead of her, because using the phraseology we talked about before, there's a lot on our focus list. And I'm hearing you want to get things done and adopted and documented and available and understood by the end of June 2024, and I don't want to have so many touch points that it's like, oh, this again. And that's not even accommodating your diagram for a roadmap. How many stops is it going to take for us to have the benefit of a reasonable enough set of information in the packet? So we all have the opportunity of it without having six steps in each one of these boxes, so figure it out and figure it out efficiently with everything else that's in that pipeline. It's not pretty. We're going to have a lot to digest and checkpoint at our roundtable on the 14th. I'm not doing it alone. That's to my colleagues.
I I agree with you, but this is also, it's like, this is, I I appreciate the preparatory work, and I think that that's what this is about, so we don't have the problems down the line.
This is the second time we've had preparatory work. When are we going to see something that I feel like I know what it relates to? This isn't, this wasn't relatable enough to me, this packet.
I thought it was a good second step. So I think we can refine from this, and they certainly heard enough questions, enough information. I think we can continue to go through the process. I mean, it's it's complex. This is a very difficult negotiation. And if we're gonna change it because we don't like the old one, well, that's, this is the process we have to go through, so I understand it's arduous, but.
I think we could have gotten more information for today.
Okay.
That's all.
So I can tell that I'm glad we're going through this process with this group versus what happened previously. You know, I I just, I I'm trying to think about the changes in how we approach this. So that's one thing I'm, I'm glad about. There is, you're, you're working hard to be transparent for us and for our public, and that's appreciated. Whether or not it's fast enough is a different issue.
I appreciate that Commissioner Willie brought up how he referenced the other documents that we didn't have in our packet, but helped provide for that value and understanding in reading this stuff in today's pack.
Well, yeah, and I have to admit that I read and highlighted the old ones so I could compare to this one, so I didn't even think about suggesting that for the S of you.
Oh, plus, meeting after holiday weekend. Oh, I get that. Okay. I get that you're trying the fast, well-thoughtful, clear, transparent. I get it.
So can I just bookend with next steps? So this was really a robust conversation the first time you're, even though it felt like this was another SIP conversation, your board has not had the opportunity to review the objective. So thank you for sticking with it and going through what felt like an arduous task. And then also hearing very clearly directing staff to look at the cadence of work and fitting that within all the other cadence of work with the board timeline, creating a comprehensive briefing booklet. We can make that in electronic format as well as a hard copy format, so it's your SIP on the go binder to take with you. We will determine what the reasonable cadence, as I said, with the board calendar, also with just digesting of information to in the SIP conversation and programming that in with staff capacity as well. This is a policy we do need to get updated, so it is about just looking at that timeline and phase of work.
I have another thing for us to talk to Ms. Angie about after this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know it's not easy work. We're glad it's you.
Thank you.
Serve us well. So Ms. Angie, I have a question to bring back up from a prior work session when Commissioner Treese was away on vacation. I think that's the timeframe when we were, that was the work session that went from this amount of topics to just one with Skaggs Lake due to deadline. And we had a conversation about how to use the local share, and the board decided that it wanted the topic to come back when we had a full board, and I've seen a rolling agenda for September. And I'm wondering, it's not listed there, so when's it coming back and how's it coming back?
I will follow up on that.
Okay, September needs to come back. Before the next commissioner goes on.
September should have 31 days anyway. I mean, you know.
Who decided that?
Yeah.
I want that SIP on the go package kind of the latte, okay?
Yeah. I must think you're very fine, you know, myself.
SIP on the go.
On the run. I think that's illegal, right? Never mind. You don't have to answer that.
That was a fun play on words. I like that.
We're over the edge of heading down.
Okay. Anything else for today? All right, got a big week next week. Have a good rest of your four-day work week this week. Thank you, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.